Let's allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hirsting?
Here.
Snyder?
Here.
Bartello?
Here.
Troop?
Here.
Ister?
Let's see, let's see TJ able to keep the kickball tournament thing, we'll put that on hold for a couple minutes. Approval of minutes, fire department, police department, treasurer, controller, engineer, code office, public works redevelopment, and planning commission. I'll make that form motion in a second.
Snyder? Bartello?
No.
Troop? Troop?
Yes.
Ister? Hirsting?
Yes. Very specific audience comment on it, on any of the agenda items that are on the agenda?
Anywhere on the agenda?
Pardon me?
Anywhere on the agenda?
Yes, that's the first question. Now in a discussion you can talk about things, but if there's specific things that are already on the agenda.
Okay.
You want to comment now, or go ahead?
Yes, I first have a question for Councilman Snyder.
Need your name for the minutes.
I'm sorry.
Need your name for the minutes.
Cheryl Snyder? No relation.
How far aware of?
No, I don't, or no relation. In the Saturday, June 29th daily item, you gave an interview about the recreational burning question and you were quoted, are those quotes accurate?
I wouldn't say it was an interview, it was a very quick telephone call, which we all know.
You spoke to a reporter and you made him.
Yes, so I have to say that the majority of the testimony will be accurate, yes. If you're asking for what my opinion is, my opinion's state of the art.
Okay, I would like to mention a few of these quotes.
Okay.
It says, "An ordinance of this type may be hard to define because if neighbors don't get along, they may not like the smoke that's coming from the outside grill next door." First of all, nobody mentioned a grill, we were talking about a bonfire. It's one of those things that if someone is purposely blowing the smoke, then of course they should be punished. If you know how to control a backyard fire, in order to let your kids roast marshmallows, I don't see a problem with that. I see a problem with allowing kids to try to roast marshmallows around a five-foot-high fire, but that's just me. Snyder said, "The city can't tell residents, they can't purchase professional devices to have backyard fireworks." True, but I could go down outside of Port Tredon and buy a burn barrel, legally buy it, but I can't bring it into the city of Sunbury and then burn in it because the city ordinance doesn't allow it. So whether or not the item can be purchased legally should have no bearing on the item itself. A reasonable person knows what to do. We can't tell our residents, they can't go to a hardware store and purchase something because their neighbor isn't smart enough to follow the rules. The people that aren't doing this right should be punished and the people that are should be allowed to do what they are doing. I guess that means that I am lord and master of my backyard because if I can go and purchase something legally, then I can use it legally in my backyard. My husband and I have been talking about going over to the gun shop and buying me an AR-15. And it's nice to know that if I go and buy it legally, I can do my target shooting in my backyard because it was a legal purchase.
Thank you.
Yes ma'am?
Hi, before you approve the minutes, I would like to read something that I wrote, please. Yes?
Yeah, as we're here, comments on it.
All right, Regina Russell, and good evening, Mayor and Councilwoman Terry. I was dismayed by the constant inappropriate behavior demonstrated by the mayor and council members with their blatant disregard for the Board of Elections' Code of Ethics. The Pennsylvania Third Class City Codes and abuse of their authorities leaders who are elected as civil servants to serve and protect the rights of the citizens and residents of the city of Sunbury and not for their own personal interests. At the December, I mean at the June 28th City Council meeting, the mayor shared with the public there was an investigation regarding the grievance complaints filed by Inspector Rhodes and Swope, which Councilmember Bartello and the public were denied an answer when asked to hear who did the investigation and the conclusion, which I felt was a significant question. I would like to ask Councilman Bartello, did the mayor call you into his office to discuss his displeasure with your job performance, followed by a meeting of the whole council for you to have the opportunity to discuss and rebut whatever concerns he had? And that would be a yes or no answer?
No.
Thank you. The mayor and two other council members have scrutinized, made several bogus attempts throughout the year to publicly humiliate Councilman Bartello and more so because of his recent media coverage alleging comments of fraudulent behavior, council members interfering and undermining his authority and responsibilities within the code office and its employees. On June 28th, two members of council were conveniently absent during the meeting. The city solicitor, Applebaum, and council member Snyder. The remaining council appearing as a quorum with four councilmen present, three to take action and vote against one. The mayor led with a motion to vote before the public to remove from the code office the employees from Councilman Bartello's responsibilities and position them under the management of Councilman Troop. The vote passed with the mayor, council member Ister, and councilman Troop. Under the Pennsylvania Third Class City Codes, City Council Rules, Rule Number Four, City Council members must avoid conflicts of interest between the members and the business of the city of Sunbury. A conflict of interest can occur when a member's private interest interferes or influences in any way or even appears to interfere with or influence the interest slash decisions of the city body. Councilmember Troop's vote was biased for private interests and he should have recused himself or the mayor should have recused Councilmember Troop. Under your rule, under Rule 12 of the City Council Rules, Item D, a majority of the whole number of members of City Council shall constitute a quorum. No resolution or ordinance should be adopted by City Council without the affirmative vote of all members of Council. The council did not have a legal quorum and the vote needs to be and should be avoided. Councilman Troop, I would like you to recuse yourself and make a motion to void that vote. And secondly, make a motion to void that vote, removing yourself responsible of overseeing the code administration and its employees. Sir?
Where am I gaining privately in this? What's private that I'm gaining?
They're, they're, they become under your, the mayor is removing. Excuse me, sir, you asked me a question, I'm trying to answer it. For the mayor to remove the responsibilities from Councilman Bartello and put them under your direction, that would give you personal interest.
But it's not private gain.
I didn't say private gain.
Well, you're saying private, it's not private interest.
And it is private interest because you are now going to be responsible.
I'm sorry, it's a city issue.
Well, that's good, I'm glad it's being recorded. And I would like to ask the mayor, why did you allow the vote to proceed in an illegal manner?
Do you know what a quorum of five is, ma'am?
Sir, you didn't have a quorum of five.
Do you know what a quorum is of five, Peter? That's three.
If he had recused himself like he was supposed to, you would have had two people to vote against Councilmember Bartello. And what you did was an illegal act and you know it was illegal.
Your standard trying to say whoever got it would have accused themselves, any end of anyone of us. Alright, thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other agendas? Okay, SRI update?
I don't have a full report coming, but I would like to make note that July 20th, there will be a, Nate Myers and the Aces will be playing at the Young Theater, so if anybody would like to attend, they'll be there. And also I want to bring attention to the resolution that was brought up in the last meeting to see if that could be approved.
Well, the answer to that, I believe this is tied with the budget, we have a budget call set. I don't know if you have a deadline, it wasn't, I understand the last meeting, you had to have this done in two weeks.
This month, yes, yeah, we have to, we have to have it completed this, well, this month, we have to have it as soon as possible. It takes about six months, it's a three-year actually for approval of this designation, it's kind of difficult. They actually, well, hopefully they receive it by the end of June, but they said that is not a problem.
When it comes to the resolution, it's required that it has this $34,000 number in it in the resolution.
Yes, part of the application is approved that we, and it supports the position, the full-time position financially.
But does it have to be $34,000?
Well, that just matches up with the funds that we can add to it to show, the funds, it adds to the funds that we have that we can show proof of five years on the limit and that would be additional to that.
So when you do your application, does it say five years times $34,000 or do you believe the city can do it?
It's understood the city can do it every year because that is, it is understood that the city can.
Is this $34,000 or $2014 here this year? Well, I would recommend to council, and we seriously consider, and vote, plan on voting on our next meeting, I'm not prepared to vote tonight. I guess Todd would talk about.
I guess financially, are we in a position right now to afford $34,000 for anything? The answer would be no, because we know how we all had to work hard just to get to the point where this has passed by the cycle to go forward without tax increases. If we were to look at affording this, yes, we'd have to consider reducing expenses in other categories, raising revenue through taxes, or working with SRI to develop. This is what I would suggest, is that we sit down and we work collaboratively with SRI to develop a business plan that has to do with means for them to show obviously revenue generation, a way to back into the city money that we're putting out. And that certainly is doable stuff. It's not a lot of money in the scheme of things, but we were nickel and diamond, literally nickel and diamond this last week.
So put a plan together and. Are we, we need to meet before the.
No, okay, yeah, that's correct. Just put something together so we can meet with an issue.
Coming up to the business plan, I think it's a simple way to address it, I don't think with a business plan in a way that we're working day in, day out, closely together, that we could accomplish. So I'm optimistic that there's a way for us to do it, I think if anything, this presents council with an opportunity to work a little bit more closely with you. I mean, I know we often share information, but for a business standpoint, we're trying to figure out ways to work more closely together, so we should be able to accomplish.
We need to find a way to do this, I don't believe there's anybody up here that is in support, but we need to keep SRI moving forward in front of the high. It's just, that's a pretty big commitment for five years, we just need to have, I agree with the talks on what's planned in place. So if you guys don't mind, we'll just pretty much sort of say that we're going to definitely address it at our next meeting, we have to, we might yell this, so be prepared. And I'll let you know if we can get something together, at least we can sit down, maybe our SRI or if you guys have a meeting, say there's something to talk about. What was the first part, or something else you wanted to know about? TJ, I saw you walk in the back. Come up front, sir. This is the gentleman who was responsible for a kickball tournament that we had this past Saturday. And I think he's here to award the first-class trophy.
Yeah, we can do that first. The Elks sponsored a team, Slade got a team together from the Elks. And they so happened to be the first Light Up the Sky Kickball Tournament Champions. And the whole point of the tournament was to raise some money for the fireworks, as, to raise money for the fireworks has been dwindling down. So we want to keep the fireworks going. I enjoy the fireworks every year, I'm not sure if everybody else in the city does, I know I do. And it just so happened that it fell the weekend before the Sunbury celebration, so it just got added on to kick off the Sunbury celebration. And it was on Saturday, and the Elks team won it. We made up a bracket, we had nine teams involved this year, and actually we're hoping to expand, maybe get 20 teams, 30 teams, however many we can get involved, bring teams in, raise as much money as we can with fireworks. And I'd also like to present a check, it's actually, it's on the check, it says 11:33, but we had a late entry fee come in today for 15 months. So it should be 11:48 is what we made for the fireworks, so we made $1,148 for the fireworks, and I'd like to present that to Jim.
I want to thank Howard for all the work he did, he took it on his own, and he's a major, a business major at Susquehanna, I think he'll do good in the future, so stick around, stay in the city of Sunbury, raise the family, and keep working on, raise them alive.
And if anybody's interested, I just decided today we're going to do a dodgeball tournament in the fall. So it's going to be called Light Up the Sky Dodgeball Tournament. So we're just going to try and keep on pushing on, bring people into Sunbury recreational aspect, I like to raise money for the fireworks. It's going to be a Light Up the Sky series, so it could be kickball, dodgeball, wiffle ball, soccer tournaments, field hockey tournaments. I'm just going to try and work on that and raise some money for the fireworks to keep them going, because I really enjoy the fireworks and I do think Sunbury has the best fireworks around, and so we keep the funds up for that.
Rick?
I just want to talk to you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, yeah, we actually, Jim, Dave, and Todd, they all participated, we have the Sunbury, and Brad, Brad Hare participated as well. And Francis, and Slade participated. We had a Sun City team play the Max Media crew in the, I'm proud to say that the Sun City celebs beat the Max Media team, so yay for Sunbury.
Uh, redevelopment authority update, it's actually meeting this Thursday, 4 o'clock, right here where we're sitting. It's a public meeting, and everybody wants to get really updated on what's happening, because there's some options coming up here in the very near future. But I invite anybody to this Thursday, 4 o'clock in this room, if you want to come up and, like I said, get updated on where we stand. Any unfinished business? New business, declare health hazard, Mr. Ister.
Down on Keller Street, we have a playground, on the side of the playground, there's a trailer, been there for how many years? Quite a few years. Quite a few years. Anyhow. Well, this happened the last couple of days, last week, Kevin's crib went down. I'm cleaning things up, we're in the process of removing the trailer. It's a property that we can't find, we have looked, this apartment is looked, we have looked, we have tried. So we declared it as a safety issue because of being adjacent to a playground, little kids and so forth, so probably about two-thirds of us cleaned up, other than the trailer, the trailer will be removed this week, and of course, cleaned up for scrap. So that is one site that we want to worry about in the future, so I would like to make a motion to declare that as a safety hazard down there.
Mike, we're all okay to move this?
What I'd like you to do is adjust the motion a little bit, that right now, Terry, the city council will act as the board of health for the city of Sunbury. And as the board of health, somebody would make a motion to have this declared a public nuisance. And then if the vote is, they take and passes, we put a notice on it that says the property owner has 10 days to finish up whatever job. I'm sure after 11 days, no one's going to show up and then you can finish your job if you want. So you can take emergency action, sure, you're fine doing that.
You clean things.
And then formally complete the process, that's what the motion will be, so it'll be a motion to have it declared a public nuisance acting as a board of health.
Is that what you said, Jim?
Yes.
Give me a second.
Bartello?
Yes.
Troop?
Yes.
Ister?
Yes.
Hirsting?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Approval of hand voices, Todd?
Yes, actually, looking for approval tonight to make payments outstanding. The amount of $43,285.47 from the general fund, that was sent out at the board for review, $278.78.
Sir?
Troop?
Yes.
Ister? Hirsting?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Um, I'm going to stay notes, I haven't seen their report.
Sent out.
Dave?
This morning.
Doctor's Honoration, Todd?
Uh, yes, of course, everybody gets their public bidding board, you just need to make a motion, we accept the request for exoneration of taxes individuals listed for the amount shown and the reasons given.
Ister?
Yes.
Hirsting?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yes.
Bartello?
Yes.
Troop?
Yes.
Okay, outdoor burning. At our last few meetings, we've had people come, this is Snyder and the gentleman sitting back there. And we've all looked at some various ends and we've all passed some emails around and some things as to what we want to get done. And we really, I'm just speaking for myself, haven't come to a conclusion for the simple reason that I think we're talking about apples and oranges. I had just a few people call me this past two weeks to say that there's nothing wrong with theirs, with what they have outside. Some of them have chimneys, I believe what you're talking about is just a pit, not a chimney, right?
It's not a pit.
There's no chimney in here, so is there?
Okay, it's not a pit, I said this last meeting, it is 18 inches off the ground, the bottom of it. It is a, best way to describe it is, it is a chicken wire construction that is two feet by two feet by three feet with wood inside and the flames go above the outside of the container. And it is less than 10 feet from the house, and the house is one side of a double house.
Is there a chimney on it?
No, it's chicken wire.
That's what I'm saying, we're talking about different things, we need.
We have, we have two different codes, no, we have two different laws, in the world of building codes, in the world of codes, the stricter of the two apply. So if we have two, and one is stricter, that is the one that applies, the stricter of the two codes.
So what I'm talking about is applying it to what, we need to be able to apply it to what?
The municipal authority law just says, you know, the fire in the city of Sunbury.
Right, well, we're talking about, you know, you're talking about, we still have that law, we don't have anything that says you can have, actually have outdoor grills, you can have charcoal grills. We need to be able, I think we're all going to do something up there, but we need to be able to say what we're applying it to.
Well, we need to adjust it and add and say that's one of the exceptions, but right now, we don't have that as an exception, so right now, it is not allowed. Because it is not an exception in the law right now. If we add it as an exception, then it will be allowed, just like you're drug users, you add that definition to the code. So if you have a drug offender definition, you got to have that definition in the code that will apply.
That's right, and I'm talking about the def, I'm not talking about any, I'm not talking about her situation, the gentleman back there's situation. I'm talking about the need to dress to get this all together, so we can apply to everything. So anyway, my suggestion is, if you guys agree or don't agree, my suggestion is that we have a public meeting, get some, get our facts together from Joan and complaints you guys have had, and actually look at what we're talking about, so we try to get one thing that covers. Terry's getting some things in the League of Cities, to see if we can find one that will cover everything that we need to allow it. Now, if it's professional made or it was just, there's a discussion in Mifflinburg sending us one. And just pretty much defines what you can do to cook your food, pretty much, and what you can't burn on, and that type of thing, I don't think we have that right now.
Mrs. Snyder, you were describing almost, sounds like it's homemade?
It is.
Okay.
I mean, now, have I ever gone to the guy and knocked on the door and said, may I see your receipt for your fire?
I appreciate that.
No, I haven't.
The way you're describing the construction, it sounds like you just made something with chicken wire.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly.
That would be.
And, and my question goes back to this article, in that it's interesting that this article appeared on the 29th of June, when the meeting immediately before that, Councilman Snyder wasn't even there, so how did he?
Chief, you are volunteers, ma'am.
Chief, what would you do if the officers were, Chief Maskio?
Sorry.
What would you do if the officers were called when she sees a big fire?
They were called.
So if, since you're addressing me a lot, maybe give an address back to you, fair enough.
Well, we, we, he's asking about the police, and I'm saying, we called the police, and the police came to our door. He wasn't there, maybe he talked to the police afterwards, and they told him whatever they told him. But they came to our door and stood there and very diligently said, well, what do you want us to do about it? And we said, there's not supposed to be burning in the, in the city limits. And they said, well, there are a couple of people on city council that have told us now that we shouldn't enforce that, that it's okay for burning.
I don't believe that.
Well.
Don't believe it.
And, and I'm sure.
You're telling me one of the police officers told you that?
A big part.
You're telling me one, a police officer told you that?
Yes.
Two of them.
The city council officers told them, not them.
Yes, yes. Well, the next time, I'll ask them if they mind if I open up to a lie detector.
Hey, chief.
I don't know what else to do.
If it's like that, I apologize to Mrs. Snyder, because my understanding from the last meeting was something similar, that's metal with coals, there's a metal bottom, a chicken wire top. But if this is a homemade device, my guess would be this is more like just an open fire.
Which would not be.
And the flames are two feet above the top of the wire.
At that point, my option would be, I would suggest we call the fire department and verify that this is an open fire.
And I was told that if I called the fire department, I could be arrested for falsely reporting a fire.
I called that particular one into the 911 center myself, because I drove by and the flames were huge, and I, I called and then your officers went down, but they said they couldn't enforce it because the code office told them it was okay. And that's, that was the story that I got too, so that's.
Back, we'll go back and forth on what it actually says, because I know it's a coals, because I saw it yesterday.
Yeah.
That is not what she's got, it's not the issue Mr. Swagger has with his outside.
I mean, and how do you enforce it as the code office anyway, do we have a distance that a hot ember will travel?
Well, back to.
To somebody else's roof.
If it were me, I would probably call a firefighter and say, is this something that is out of control and not contained by this, this device? Because I think we do have something, if memory serves, and correct me if I'm wrong, then we have something on the outside stove thing, were very popular several years ago, it was issued with that.
That's the EDS source, EDS.
Or in chapter 53.
Well, we know Jean, the one you have next door is a legal.
Yes, but now she's no longer using that. She bought something similar to what he said. But as far as I'm concerned, it's still open burning. Those hot emeralds can go up in the air, and you know, those things are, this is in the city. You build campfires in the country, or campfires. This is in the city, if you can't burn paper in a burning barrel, I don't care if it's a short one or a high one, you still have hot emeralds coming out, and they use gasoline to start them.
Wow. And melt the can.
Yeah, they melt the gas can, I mean, it's, but, I mean, what I'm asking for, and I'm sorry, I mean, I should wait to the comments, but anyhow. What I'm asking for is to stop burning completely until something is amended to our code. I mean, barbecued, as far as toasted marshmallows, fine, what do they make barbecued grills for? Charcoal grills for.
It's the same thing.
When I was raising my, thinking, yeah, we could have a cold.
And I, I use an Elke gas grill, there are days, depending on how I'm doing this, when the flames can be pretty high if I, if I let it out of control. So I think we're back to the mayor's suggestion of, I think they need to sit down and maybe specify, this is okay, this is not okay.
But in the meantime, they're continuing to burn, and I was told by the code that they were going to approach that, say they're going to burn. That has not happened, they've continued to burn. Yes, and the one across the street, he had one going the other night, we were setting one on the porch, and all of a sudden you heard this, whoosh! There it was, you know, five feet from this house, five feet from his house.
Data, I think we're going to go back to the fire department, get a reputation on the distance, like Jean just mentioned, and see how close, how far away they should be.
and see how close, how far away they should be, the structure, maybe the home, the garage.
And final signing on homes, what's the thing?
Final signing, you know, I asked a tenant, I burned her, no, the, the, the gas.
Correct, correct.
So it, it happens, there's no question.
May I add one more thing, if, in your discussion, put a time on it, oh, no burning after nine, or eight P M., you know? Because, you know, once it gets late like that, the people get up, they go in our houses, it's still burning?
If there's something else, Chief, it's a good idea, they have to extinguish it before they go in.
And then put a time on it, no burning after nine o'clock, eight o'clock, maybe, you know, later in the summer than in the winter. And what they can burn, too, you know?
No garbage.
But some, some would give off, certain kind of would give off more hot emeralds than others do. I mean, I, I know that by burning a wood burner in my...
And more smoke as well.
Dale, is there any fire department meetings coming up? Is there any fire department meetings other than the first of the month?
Yes, first of the month.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Yes, sir.
What I'd like to know, and that, that gets answered, if this is allowed, just because, well, somebody's kid wants to toast marshmallows, in the event that someone does catch a fire, it's too late. Take it into consideration, once a home is burned, and a possibility of a light loss, or a child gets, you know...
Don't bring that up.
This, this is important.
Don't, don't use the for the children argument, please, please.
If a child gets burned, you'll, you'll be sorry.
Oh, give me a break, let's not go there, I'm telling you, once it happens, it's too late.
The reason, the reason we put this code into effect again was because of the smoke, and because of people with allergies and asthma and stuff, trying to be able to enjoy their property also, even though they live next to somebody who likes to burn. They also have a property, and they have the right to enjoy their patio and their picnic just as much as the person who likes to burn. And when you have people that live so close together, and end up with situations like this, it's unavoidable, they have to find a, a common area, a common ground.
Jerome, can you, can I ask you to volunteer, maybe we want to get together next week, just get some representation from the fire department, anything, you guys in black. I, I don't believe there's anybody up here that doesn't want an outlaw, but we need to remember, we can't be arresting people for making hot dogs, that's what I'm saying. We need to be able to get something in black and white, and I'd be curious what you guys have, you probably have some specific things, maybe you don't, the fire department.
No.
Yeah, we really don't, I, I mean, I'd be worried by the work with Dale, if you guys...
From the fire department's perspective, get that involved, we'll be sometime next week before the next meeting.
Sure.
Yes, sir.
If you're close, Mayor, I, you know, I, I think, I think your, your approach is the best way to go, um, you know, there's, there's a lot of controversy both ways about this. If it's, if it's a, a purchase instrument, like a, what do they call it, chimneys, um, there's, there's really nothing wrong with those. Now, obviously, if you don't use the right wood, if you use wet wood, you're gonna get a lot of smoke. I mean, it becomes like the lady up there said, it becomes common sense, but I, I think, and, and most people are responsible enough to do things the right way. I'm not, I'm not in favor of homemade devices, I think they're dangerous, but I think if, if they're purchased properly and they're used properly, there really isn't anything wrong with them. Then you get, you get into some of the, you know, the other aspects of like smokers, you know, meat smokers.
Are you, are you gonna start looking at something like that?
Just like I was saying, there's, there's a lot of barriers, I think we need to get something to address everything. We'll, we'll get as much information as we can get together in the next two weeks, and again, guys, I would say put it, play a little book on something on the twenty-second. If you don't like what we've prepared, move to something different, but we need to be able to get, let's, let's just start with Mifflinburg, who goes there.
It's just not common sense.
I mean, her instance, she's obviously got a neighborhood where there's no coal, five foot, high bar, that's an obvious violation.
Mr. Mayor, may I make a suggestion, please? Since Mrs. Snyder is here, and she, uh, last, at the last meeting, mentioned that, uh, she has asthma, which would make her legally disabled, I would think, and that would somewhere fall under the Americans with Disabilities Act, that maybe an amendment can be made to the second ordinance that Councilman Bartello said regarding the burning pits, that there's, you have two on the record, and there's one that's more extensive than the other. Maybe you can amend that and add more detailed guidelines as to what the burning would be, and that's just a suggestion.
That's what, it's exactly what we're talking about.
Well, thank you, you know, some of us say things differently.
Go ahead.
The, the other thing, same article again, the caption for the picture was, "Sunbury is considering changing its burning ordinances." I thought the ordinance, one of the ordinances that's in place is no burning in the city limits. So we're not saying change it, we're saying enforce it.
But when that was written, ma'am, that was for trash pile burn, not specifically burning refuse is what's noted. It's not open burning, and that's...
Well, this is definitely open burning.
Well, there is a difference between open burning, and I wanna ask, just, just for the sake of clarification, one more time.
This would probably be less of a problem if they actually had a solid container instead of the chicken wire.
Just tell me, please, to show what you're...
And if this goes back to, well, they're selling something similar to that at Kohl's, then we're right back to Mr. Snyder's quotes about, we can't tell people how to use their backyard. If they bought it legally, they can use it.
And that's why we're, that's why we're gathering you.
Which is stupid, I mean, excuse me, but that, that quote, that's why I wanted to find out for sure if this quote was real. Because when I read it, I reread it, and I reread it, and I said to my husband, is this guy a moron or what, or was he misplugged?
Wait a second, that's not, yeah, I wasn't hoping burning like you were, he missed last council meeting. You, you had brought about the big fire out back, Todd was never...
And my man was put on the record, and if he wanted to take the phone book and look at me up, I'm in there. He could have called me and said, what do you mean by this?
If you could stop, just one second, let me address you, all right, very simply. True, I was not at the last meeting, that's because I had work, all right? I was, a telephone call came to me after the meeting, from Francis, just asking for my opinion simply on the issue of burning in the city. To the best of my knowledge, our ordinance says it stands, addresses burning specifically, open when it's refuse involved. Open burning for the sake of a fire pit, or for a grill, as long as common sense applies, is allowed.
And use common sense, that's my question.
Right, so, so, using common sense, to me, is what it boils down to. That's this simple statement that was given to Francis for the sake of the article. So I don't know quite where all of these other comments are coming from, but it is just a matter of...
Did I give you the article?
No, I did, actually, thank you.
Well, then you know where the comments are coming from, they're coming from you.
Sure, okay.
Okay, well, you're saying like...
I'm saying common sense should prevail, and I'm being very clear as to what our ordinance addresses. In your situation, I was not made aware of, I was... Mrs. Snyder, I was not told about your comments during the meeting, I was not aware of your specific situation, it was not cited when I was questioned. It was just simply a matter of, do you think open burning in the city, when common sense prevails, should be allowed? And my answer would be yes, and that would still be yes, because I'm really sick and tired of ultimately we feeling that we always have to address the stupid here. There are two things in this city who should enjoy their amenities in their backyard if they take your, they take your needs into consideration.
And I should be able to sit on my own back porch, or in my yard with my dog, and not have to run into the house and close all the windows and doors because the moron down the street decides he wants to, you know, I don't know what he's trying to burn, but...
If he's not doing it, obviously, with, taking your house into consideration, sure.
Now, okay, and what she said...
I can actually control a little bit.
That gets you into a whole lot of other trouble, because that means that you are telling me that I have to disclose to this guy that I have asthma, and I have to go down and knock on the door and say, excuse me, I have asthma, please don't burn so much stuff for me, okay? That's infringing on my right to privacy and the HIPAA laws, okay? So, no, I shouldn't have to be the one to go and say to him, you can't do this.
That's why they make an amendment, and they can add the guideline that you are a person with a disability.
But that shouldn't matter.
It's just like advertising you have a, a disability, and you have a tag outside and a sign outside.
We have a law that says, uh, no bonfires. Now, to me, it's just like Kevin Smith Snyder said, with common sense, a lot of stuff that they, if they buy, have a screen top about ten inches high, eight inches high. And if you use common sense, but I know there's people who take those screens off and put twelve-inch logs in and light it, which, I agree, that's not good. It's all boils down, we have, I bet we have a thousand in this city right now, and out of those thousand, I know we probably have four or five people that do not listen. I think what we have to define is what's a bonfire. I don't, you know, it's all like you say, it's common sense.
All right, we'll get all the information together, and address that as best we can.
Well, I'd like to go back to the lady...
Not talking about your disability.
No, no.
Okay.
To the lady who made the comment about, until it's brought forward from the council, and you guys made up your mind, can't we go by the more restrictive thing, which is no burning in the city, until you decide how to work out the pros and cons of what we're gonna allow this, and that? Because as long as there is the partially open door that says, well, we might allow this burning and that, that means that everybody in the city who has the same problems that I have, and I am not the only person in this city with asthma. Unfortunately, there are hundreds, and in order to allow the burning to go on, until you guys meet, some kind of consensus means that I have to spend my summer, and possibly even the fall, hiding in my house because there's a moron down the street.
We meet in two weeks, how many times are you gonna burn in the next two weeks?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, that was funny, um, that's what you told me two weeks ago.
Is he gonna burn it every night? Oh, you're, I see, you're glad, okay.
Okay.
Either way, we're acting on it two weeks.
So, so now we have, well, then another two weeks, we'll make our minds up, and we'll do this, and then we have to, you know, send this around, we have to publish, we have to, we have to give everybody a chance to come into, you know, the whole picture of it, which means maybe we can stop it by December thirty-first. So meanwhile, I don't get to enjoy my flowers in the backyard in the summer, I don't get to enjoy my dogs in the yard to feed, because I can't be in my yard, and that's not fair.
It's also, ma'am, not fair to penalize the first thousand intentionally that the code office feels are in place, to penalize the nine-hundred-and-ninety-five that aren't doing it right, for the sake of the five that are doing it wrong, and that's what it boils down to.
We try, we try going the route of, let's get this one guy to stop, and we call the code office, we call the...
We're not passing along for one person.
No, but if he's complained about, and somebody actually goes, knocks on his door, that is an official, and says...
I think we've already, several people say that this particular one is a violation, doesn't fit our current...
Joe, have you checked out that fire pit up there, it's the address you're talking about?
Yes, it's homemade.
It's homemade, and you go up there and you tell the man abuses it again, he's gonna get arrested. Chief, is that correct?
I'll be back tomorrow morning.
All right, is that correct? All right, so be there one more time, after it's homemade, he gets arrested, correct?
That's good, yeah.
All right, that's fine, that's fine with me then.
Yep.
And may I have the phone number to call when he starts burning again at eight o'clock at night?
Yes, you may.
Thank you.
Okay, Chief, I'll give you that.
Right, right up there.
Yes, sir, I'd just like to say that, uh, on your, your provisions, we're moving it further away from the house and having a designated spot there, and no flames higher than the device itself, or probably...
The flame, that's what I was saying.
Right, so we can't flame shoot it out or in, and you have that, you're...
If you burn it normally like you would, you're not gonna get the flames out of your house. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is a woman up front, I have C O P D, and asthma, and I can care less if you grill, or has an open fire. Live and let live, I'm here for another reason, can you move on with us a little bit?
Dempsey subdivision, John?
Yes, the code office received an application for the subdivision on Miller Street, Dempsey's own double home, it's a one deed, and...
Can we clear all the thing up first, this is not Dempsey's, this is a person named Dempsey?
There's a person named Dempsey that has a double home...
Nobody, nobody's even here talking about Dempsey's three... Yes, thank you.
Between, between Laker Street and the textile mill, and it's, uh, in one deed, for, we've gone through this before. One deed is two half-doubles, and the Dempsey, Dempseys are wanting to, I guess, sell, or at least make it into two half-doubles or two separate deeds, which requires a subdivision that comes under our ordinance. So, uh, the, it's under, it's under review, and planning permission will be this month, uh, and, uh, look at all the comments that are given by the various agencies, and, uh, we'll then, uh, give a recommendation to city council whether to approve the subdivisions, or disapprove it, or, or subvert between, uh, contingent approval and, uh, be something else. So that, that will be coming up.